And it's calling to work. Before we get started, I have a couple of things. First of all, we want to welcome Brady, our new committee member here. And also want to give a little acknowledgement to our recently crowned club champion from the committee and our own Ben Page. You did a wonderful job out there. I think you won by three or four. Yeah. All right. How about leaving this in the pleasure of the evening? Does everybody rise from that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one mission under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Looking at the diocese, I am sharing a thank to everybody here, all present showing, whole business. The first thing we want to look at is the second consideration, secondly, golf course, master plan and update. Samantha, you got a little update for us?
I do, very briefly. And then we also have Josh with Staples Golf Design on Zoom joining us. Hopefully you all had a chance to read the staff report and go through the draft hole by hole concept design. The point of tonight's meeting is to get hopefully final feedback. We would like to take this to council as the next step so we can continue on in the process. A key piece of this, after this meeting Staples will be able to communicate back with THK, who's handling the financial side and the operations side of the golf course. Based on the final decisions made this evening, they would take those recommendations and THK can then look at what the numbers look like from that perspective. They can't do any of that until this is finalized. So in brief overview, again, I don't want to reiterate what's already in the staff report. This subcommittee worked diligently based on the feedback received from our first meeting and also comments that have also been received out in the wild, as I say, out on the course and just in the general public. And so this iteration that you're seeing is a combination of all those different thoughts and comments that have been received. Again, the subcommittee and staff and the consultant heard very loud and clear, the irrigation system is an absolute priority. We have to fix the infrastructure on the course for any level of sustainability and irrigation is the priority. That will be the largest, likely the largest budget item that we address through the master plan. Greens and bunkers renovations come after that. Again, that is general consensus. We've heard that's a huge priority. We also preserved the par 72 within the course as well. And we returned hole 13 to a hole but added in some safety function to better protect some of those homes and again, address some of the concerns we hear from that area. We also focused on the practice facilities and general access for golfers to utilize food and beverage facilities. You'll note that, I think the probably the best one if the public wants to follow along or the committee, that general overview of the concept design expands the range, reorients the practice spaces. The practice putting green gets located next to the driving range. And where the existing putting green exists right now in front of the clubhouse, that would become an expanded bar outdoor seating area with the intention that sets golfer-centric. So if there's a wedding going on, the wedding can take place in the ceremony site, they can use the interior of the building. But that outdoor patio space is still reserved for golfers and neighbors and residents to come and enjoy a lunch at 1 o'clock even if they're setting up for a wedding. So that was also a key piece. And then there were also, within that, we added, this was based on a request from Jordan as well as just in general for a superintendent to have a 19th hole or an alternate hole to allow for better ongoing maintenance. As you hopefully have read in our 6 o'clock business meeting, you'll see we hit 114,000 rounds last year. That's an incredible amount of rounds to be played on the course, which makes this alternate hole all the more important for the maintenance, the maintenance crew to be able to function and keep the course in good working order. So that is, that's an add and it's considered a relief hole. And then we also addressed a number of safety enhancements, not only on 13, but along 12, along 5, along 3. We took care of that as well and 2 also. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions if there are any. Again, your packet includes a concept design overview and then the second attachment is a hole by hole analysis of all of the change. I also will say committee member Zoomberg was on the subcommittee. He's able to answer questions. Mark Vale is a former committee member. He was also on the subcommittee, obviously not here this evening. So Robert, do you have anything you want to add or do you want, should we go over to Josh with Staples?
Let's go to Josh.
Okay. Josh, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. If I haven't covered everything, can you add anything else that from an architect's standpoint is kind of critical pieces that were missing? Or do you want to add anything specifically that was left out?
No, I'd say you covered most of the big overview of this. And then again, I think that we try to, if there are any specific questions on a hole by hole basis, we're happy to take those tonight and try to get a little more detail on some of those. But I think the main thing is to really look at this on the broader goals that we had and whether or not these are being met. I think from the sounds of it, we've gotten really close. And again, I thank Mark and Robert and Samantha for your time in these last couple of months and getting us to this point. I think we've, as everyone's probably seen, made a lot of progress, a few changes here. Got that par 72, that was really important to everyone. And I think this plan is getting really, really close. So again, I'm happy to answer any questions as we go through this. And I think, again, we, you know, between the irrigation system, the practice facilities, the bunkers and greens, just all your core infrastructure, that's really what we want to focus home on this. And in doing so, I think, you know, there's the opportunity with some of the smaller adjustments, the safety things that Samantha just addressed, that this is the opportunity to do those projects at the same time as the irrigation system especially. So trying to get all into one package and figure out the schedule and kind of the next steps on this. But yeah, happy to answer any questions and go into the detail that we need.
So I believe you likely have comments from the public. The committee can ask questions of staff right now or of Josh, or you can jump right into public comments and then come back. It would be up to the committee.
Josh, I have, this is rare, I have one on the safety issues. What are those proposed, like the long 12 and such?
Yeah, so I think the holes we really focused as far as safety, I think a lot of these, you know, there's small tweaks here and there, but 5, 12 and 13, like Samantha said, were the ones that were, and I guess 14 as well, are the biggest concern. And, you know, there's always a little bit of a liability thing that you can't say you know completely addressed every single ball that possibly fly off the golf course. But we think we've, you know, taken a crack at some adjustments here on those holes that are just going to make it a little less likely and get, you know, golfers aim the right way and really the way they experience these holes, you're not going to be, you know, have any inclination of hitting a ball off the property line, at least not as much as there is currently. So I'd say on hole number five, a lot of that had to do with the teeing angle and also with that new centerline bunker, just getting a visual for that, you know, guides the eye to play some more to the right side of that hole away. Really that first tee shot's the one that is most concerned on that. So those two tweaks there help address that change. On 12, this was a kind of the last step here. Mark and Robert and Smith and our team went through this just a couple of weeks ago and we decided that it made sense to reroute that car path from the left side to the right, at least at the start of the hole, creating a lot of these tee shots coming through, to get more room on that left side for the fairway and, you know, just get that car path out of the way. Again, it's a small, it's maybe five to 10 yards max that we're able to grab on it. But it gives you, you know, the ability to aim your tee shot away from the road on that hole and not feel like you're at a disadvantage on that hole. And we also are proposing a few replans. I think if you see on the plan, just right off the tee box there and conjunction with the net, that's already there. I think, you know, that's three key pieces that at least, you know, start to get golfers aiming the right way, thinking about the type of shot they're playing and hopefully addresses a majority of those balls that are finding their way over the road there. And then on 13, it's a little bit of the same. We actually, that's one green we're proposing to completely rebuild on this plan. And in doing so, we're able to grab a little bit more room to the right side and shift that aim point away from the homes on the left. Keeping that net, we propose to still keep that net, but again, that tee angle shifts with that green expands to that right side. So not only are you pulling that aim point away, but then also that expanded green makes it a little bit easier, it's a little less carry to get to that green. You know, the shorter hitters don't feel like they have to absolutely bomb or drive or get up to that green, especially on a par three. I think just all those changes together are going to address some of the safety concerns you have there.
All right. Thanks, Josh. Anybody else? Committee questions?
I have some comments, but I was going to wait to hear what.
I don't want to do that till 6 o'clock.
No, they can come. If they're here to speak on this item, they can come up and speak now.
Oh, good. All right. Let's hear from the public. Andy Horner, where are you?
Good evening. Thanks for having me. I'm Andy Horner, for those who don't know. Longtime golfer, the men's club, part of the board of directors. With any kind of change, there's obviously good and bad. I want to talk about some of the positives I see in this plan and maybe some cautionary tales that I've read. First and foremost, I really support the movement of number two tee in green and the driving range back about 50 yards. I think that creates a nice space for the putting green, the chipping area, excuse me, and a social area, some tables, some chairs, some things, some parents can come down, have a drink, watch their kids hit balls. I think it's good for the community. I think in addition to that, that opens up the space Samantha mentioned earlier of a patio being where the old putting green is. Today, if you tee off anytime after 10 o'clock, there is no place for you to go as a golfer to have a drink or a bite to eat because Wedgwood takes over and closes the bar at 2 or 3 o'clock every day. So this creates a space that golfers can go, but also the general community. I think there's a lot of revenue leakage today where people are going to Lottie Blooms or they're going to OC Tavern and they're not staying and spending their money at the golf course. Nice patio, nice view up there, you're going to get community members as well. So I think that's a real positive thing. From a revenue generating standpoint, you can't put another person on this golf course. It's book solid all day, every day. So any money you're spending on green expansion or tee boxes, it's going to have no ROI. If it's safety related or maintenance related, it has to be done, I get it. But if you're going to spend money just because you want to, it's not going to generate any more revenue for the golf course, right? And finally, I know we got three minutes. On the plan of doing 15A and 15B, I would suggest you create 15B before you do anything else from an irrigation standpoint. So you've got a hole, hole by hole, you can close. Close one, do the irrigation, switch it to 15B, gets played as part of our rotation. So you still have 18 holes to play. You still can post a gin score. At 16 holes, it gets more difficult to post. It can be done, but it's a partial posting, not a full posting. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Andy. Amber Hughes.
Hello. We live on hole 10 and our concern is we're hit probably three or four times a week of golf balls and those are a little more harmful. We also find numerous golf balls throughout our yard and our front yard. It's quite dangerous. We've had a lot of damage to our property and we're concerned to even sit on our deck at this point. What we'd like to see you consider is possibly merging the green on hole one and 10 or at least repositioning the tees. That would make it safer for everybody along Magdalena. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Linda Jetwood.
Thanks for the opportunity. I live on the 13th hole, right across the fairway. And I met with the golf committee in 1996 about the same issues. During COVID, we had a Zoom meeting about the same issues. Dick Beal was very helpful in trying to get things changed and things were changed. We had the net finally fixed that was drooping for probably a decade. And then we had an extension of some fabric for about 15 yards, which helps our home because we get a lot of the low burners that come at 112 miles an hour towards our house. And it's not just us, it's four or five properties up along the one-way street there that we cannot use our front yards, we can't park on our driveways, we can't have the garage doors open. We, if we do any gardening, we put on bike helmets. I know that the address up above us, they have children, they can't go out and use the deck ever. So I just think that there's a quick fix to it, always has been. Move the tee up 30 yards and it will miss a lot of the homes. I think the back tee's at 205, maybe move it up to 160. I know you have other three pars at 160 and you'd probably like to have some diversity with club use, but that would be a really good fix for us. Or move it over the ravine. And I understand there's a pump house back there. I don't know how far back you can go to make it a legitimate three par, but that would be the best fix. And that was what we talked about back in 1996, that we could maybe address that and look at that. And we do appreciate what has been done, it has helped. But then they came and cut, we had quite a bit of blockage with the low pine tree growth and it was stopping a lot of balls, but that got cut away last week. So then we're going, okay, that's, that affected us more than it affects the homes above us that still get hit with the high balls. Signage might be helpful too, to say, you know, there's properties on the left, maybe be, you know, be resident about that. Also moving the tee box, we're adjusting it, what you're talking about, the area back there is just not that big. I mean, if you moved it over all the way to the ravine, I see golfers every day, there's a lot of bad ones. So we're assuming that you're going to adjust this and people can still aim. Well, a lot of people can't aim. I see people drive the ball and it goes 15 yards. Another thing that's coming to mind is when we do deal with the public with the golf balls in our yard, it is very confrontational. And we never know if there's going to be retaliation or not. So there's that added to it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Kurt, lovely. Kurt, you're up.
Hi, my name's Kurt Lookie. I play a lot of golf at Mini, I'm also on the men's club board. And the comment I have, and Josh, are you listening? Can you hear?
Yeah, I can hear.
Do you know approximately how many square feet each green is now?
I believe your average is 3,500 or around that. If you pull the number, we didn't spread to you, we need the exact number.
No, I don't, I didn't realize. Okay. The reason, the reason I'm bringing Andy this up is I also am lucky enough to captain a team play. And anytime somebody comes and plays the course for the first time or haven't played it that much, the one comment they get when they walk off the course is how great the greens are. And I know, I understand what, what you guys are doing as far as expanding the greens because of expanded pin placements and the care of the greens and everything else. I'm just hoping that you can minimize that as much as possible and still be effective as far as what you guys need to do. Because one of the great things about the golf course is, is the greens and that includes the size of the greens because when you miss them, the chipping is real difficult because of the kakuya and it just adds a lot of character to the course. So, so as much as you possibly can, I, I think I'm speaking for some other people that like to see the greens stay as close as they possibly can in sizes they are. Thanks.
Thanks, sir. Javier.
Good evening. I'm Carol Anguia. I live at par 13. I don't hate it, I do, it's on the 13th hole, just about where Linda was just talking about. And like she mentioned, we get high golf balls daily. My kids really don't like golf on the deck anymore or in the front yard and they're kind of always like dodging. And a couple of them have balls that they've never had before. So I don't presume to kind of be a golf course expert or anything, but I just wanted to put a comment out there that anything that can be done to expand the safety of the 13th hole would be very much appreciated in terms of whatever you're going to do, changing angles, moving tee boxes, making greens bigger, will take any, we're all a bit, I don't know, maybe having tryouts before the 13th hole for some golfers is, I don't know how reasonable that is, but it really is, that's interesting, but it really is pretty bad how often we get balls on our roof, our deck, our front yard. We've had two cars with no smashing, so anything you guys can do would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Javier. Edward.
Good afternoon, committee. I am slightly agnostic about most things about golf. I rely on golf architects and other people to kind of give me guidance, but I've been an advocate up in Sacramento for about 25 years. And one of the ways I've discovered to be most effective is to suggest basically resolutions or legislation. And to that end, I have a couple of resolutions that you may want to consider as part of your advisory capacity to the city council. One has to do specifically with the master plan. And so what I'm going to do very quickly with the time that's allotted is I'm going to basically read to you, quote, the findings of this resolution. I've got copies open for you. You don't have to worry about understanding what I'm saying. Now you can look at it and decide after you've had a chance to look at it or whatever. The first resolution is regarding this master plan. Now, I was a planning commissioner in the city of San Clemente in 1982 to 1981. I was a city parks and recommissioner in 1991, 92, and I just finished a tour just last year. To get to the point, I find, whereas the Billy Bell designed municipal golf course was established by the founder, Ollie Hanson, approximately 100 years ago and for the benefit of the community in San Clemente, whereas San Clemente is one of the only five coastal cities in the county of Orange with a public access course, but it's the only one that's not associated with a resort. Whereas the direct management of the start times as of the partner of the pairing scheduling, et cetera, et cetera, currently has proven to be somewhat problematic. I would suggest that part of your review of the management situation, you address that. And finally, the golf course is indeed an independent financial entity. I would suggest that the current maintenance and capital expenditures, of which you're going to be looking at, be substantiated with review of the capital expenditures from the finance department. So essentially, the course operations should include under the management of Mr. Cook, hopefully, the marshal, the superintendent, et cetera, et cetera. And it should be, all things should be under the direction of the course manager. That brings me to the next point, which is the, within the general, within the master plan, that I think the restaurant and the hospitality aspects of this golf course should be oriented to golf. It's sort of turned into this kind of wedding menu, which is all well and good, but at 116,000 rounds a year, I think the community and the golfers are best served by having a clubhouse operation that essentially is there for the golfers when they finish the rounds during the day, lunchtime, et cetera, et cetera. The point that was made earlier was that, that was what needed to happen and I think it serves our golf and community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll give you copies of this.
Okay. Thomas.
Good afternoon. My name's Jim Gregerson. I live at the corner of Magdalena and Ardea, where the two streets come together, the broadhead point there. Right now, we're probably averaging about 500 balls per year that either hit the house or hit the landscape around the house or hit cars or something. But I go out and I pick them up, I have a five gallon bucket right now, just from this year. So anyway.
What hole number is it?
That would be the 14th fairway. And I got to compliment city staff for removing all that fire hazard along the street there. They did a really nice job. But the problem that I have is that we keep getting those balls and they're, I mean, they've come whizzing by my ear and I feel the wind go by my ear. So it's deadly, to say the least. I'm wondering if you can't change the location of the 14th tee back towards the houses and along the line of the eucalyptus streets and use that, use those eucalyptus streets as kind of a border, a barrier. And then the 13th tee would, or the 13th green would then be moved up to where the 14th tee is now, would be an elevated green. You could move the tee on the 13th forward to eliminate those other houses. Anyway, I would really appreciate if you'd consider doing something to protect all the houses along Magdalena. And that seems like that would be a pretty easy way to do. Thank you.
Thanks for your input. Jay.
So I'm kind of a new kid on the block, I've moved here in 2020. First thing I'd say, hats off to the grounds crew for the incredible job they do on maintaining the course and especially the greens. I had belonged to a private club up north for 20 years, which also underwent renovation, a year-long renovation that took 18 months, by the way, by Robert Trench Jones Jr. Group. My, obviously, safety is a big issue, but as far as, one of the priorities that the RTJ group said was playability. Most golfers are not able to fly onto the green, let's say from 175. They hit it so errantly there that it's scary. And I don't know if they're saying that it can be done, but you know, they always say that the liabilities were the golfer, but not the course. But Saddleback wasn't sued by that one golfer that injured that person, so you know, just to be aware, okay? Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Thomas. James.
Good afternoon, my name is Jim Gregerson. I live at the corner of Magdalena and Ardea, where the two, two streets come together. They're right on the point there. Right now, we're probably averaging about 500 balls per year that either hit the house or hit the landscape around the house or hit cars or something. But I go out and I pick them up. I have a five gallon bucket right now, just from this year. So anyway.
What hole number is it?
That would be the 14th fairway. And I got to compliment city staff for removing all that fire hazard along the street there. They did a really nice job. But the problem that I have is that we keep getting those balls and they're, I mean, they've come whizzing by my, my ear. I feel the wind go by my ear, so it's deadly, to say the least. I'm wondering if you can't change the location of the 14th tee back towards the houses and along the line of the eucalyptus streets and use that, use those eucalyptus streets as kind of a border, a barrier. And then the 13th tee would, or the 13th green would then be moved up to where the 14th tee is now, would be an elevated green. You could move the tee on the 13th forward to eliminate those other houses. Anyway, I would really appreciate if you'd consider doing something to protect all the houses along Magdalena, and that seems like that would be a pretty easy way to do. Thank you.
Thanks for your input. Jay.
So I'm kind of a new kid on the block. I've been moved here in 2020. First thing I'd say, hats off to the grounds crew for the incredible job they do on maintaining the course and especially the greens. I had belonged to a private club up north for 20 years, which also underwent renovation, a year long renovation that took 18 months, by the way, by Robert Trench Jones Jr. Group. My, obviously, safety is a big issue, but as far as, one of the priorities that the RTJ group said was playability. Most golfers are not able to fly onto the green, let's say from 175, 150 in. And with the types of grasses we have down here, which are very difficult, the kukuya, as you said, in the green surrounds, is there a plan for a different type of grass, regrassing, so that you can run things into the greens versus the velcro that we deal with typically here? Anyway, that's the main thing I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you for your input. Kelly.
Hi, my name's Kelly Wright, and I live on the corner of Caspanzo and Cota off the 12th. So my home isn't even on the main street, about 270 yards at a 45 degree angle off the 12th tee box. And I've had to replace two glass wind screens and windows this year, plus similar to my neighbors off the 13th, you take your life in your hands when you're gardening. But what I was wondering, if would be considered, since it's a par five, would there be consideration in maybe making it a par three? Some of the golfers may not be as skilled, but they have huge drivers and they're just winding up hitting the hell out of it, forgive me. And I'm thinking that might be part of, part of the issue. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. John. Bert.
Hello, good afternoon. I'm here, I live near the golf course as well, and I'm near the Crusty, just across from number 10. And I wanted to address some concerns as a neighbor about number eight F, the double decker practice facility that's being considered. That would significantly affect many people's views in our neighborhood and potentially reduce home values as well and just be a little, a lot different look than it has been for many, many years. It would also require, I believe, raising the nets higher up, which would also affect our views looking out toward the ocean as well. So that's one concern. And typically, you know, I'm a golfer as well, there'd be typically not a lot of wait times at the driving range unless you go there on like a Saturday afternoon or something like that. It's not like you're over capacity all the time. So I'm not sure the benefits outweigh, you know, the need in that situation. Also, the clubhouse use, you know, we have weddings there constantly, brings in additional traffic. There used to be a nice restaurant that the public and local neighbors could use. I know in the survey, that was a big concern for a lot of people in the original survey, to try to do something different with Wedgewood and get something in that golfers can use as a facility more and also reduce traffic, parking issues. It creates other issues that are concerning. And then I was wondering if the committee, as far as the additional practice facilities in our neighborhood, right behind the Lily Field, there's the old shooting range, which is quite a large parcel of land. When you go back into the alleyway and everything else, that would make for a beautiful spot for additional practice facilities that I didn't see considered at all. That land sits, all its stores that I can see is like the dory boat from the lifeguards and a trash area for the golf course. So it could be incorporated potentially as a city parcel to be used and converted into a practice facility. So I'm wondering if that's been considered. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jared.
Thanks for having me. My name is Jared Pollack, and I'm currently living just on the sixth hole on Kai Hill Comercial, and I'll provide these for you as well. I'm just going to show them for everybody to see. As the plans lie, our house sits just directly, I guess, in line with the driving range of the tee boxes on the sixth hole. And as we like presently, we are averaging probably about one to two golf balls per day, which as you can understand exponentially is quite a few golf balls, you know, just regularly a year. Just here's an example of just in the past 60 days that we have had land in our backyard. Does a lot of damage, as everyone else mentions, to our house, just through whether it's through fences or through just windows. And we've also had just a lot of golf balls come in through our window while we're just sitting in the living room, you know, with the kids. And the, the biggest issue is that just last year, sitting in our backyard, our one-year-old, she was struck by a ball and required her to go to the emergency room. My apologies. And did extended damage to her leg. She was bruised, close to shattering her knee. And I understand that normally you get errant balls and that's a common thing and the price that they live on a golf course, but just as it currently lies, the tee box just shoots directly towards our house as, I'll provide you just illustrated here in the current plans. And so granted, the sixth hole does hook to the right, but as people just hit it straight, and that's not even an errant ball, if they hit it straight on, it goes right to our backyard. And we've obviously conversed with our neighbors and those who live near us on Kai Comercial, and they were dealing with similar issues of having balls hit directly into their yards. And I won't complain, free golf balls is nice. I've never had to pay for golf balls in a long time, but we now have a one-year-old and a three-year-old, and we are afraid to go inside backyard because it is not even a, it is a regular occurrence that people come in, not only into our backyard and go through the gate and enter private property into our backyard looking for balls, but just on the other side of the fence, every day I'd say, on average, one in three groups are searching for balls either in our backyard or next to our fence. And we can provide proof of that with video cameras. And so more than just a complaint, I believe a simple proposal would be to just move, slightly move, the tee box angle for the sixth hole and direct it so that it's more straight shooting towards the green of the sixth hole. So that way people aren't trying to shoot straight and then to the right, it would simply just make a straight shot and then potentially just moving the tee box just slightly to the right to make it a more clear course for us. So thank you for listening, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jared. Appreciate it.
And here's the materials for the, for the members.
Are there any other comments from the general public? If so, you can just throw out a card and bring it up. Not, Josh, could that give you some more ammunition there for some of the potential remedies for ball safety?
Yeah, no, I do appreciate the comments, and I think what you deal with is an old historic course on a, a tighter piece of property. We, for the house, is kind of where it developed as an integrated part of the course from the beginning, you know, we started to see these issues with technology and people are hitting it further and further offline. So there's a lot we can do, there's some things that just physically can't with the amount of land we have, but I think a couple of the comments I heard, I think I want to start with 14, there, you know, there was consideration on 14, we've got some tree planting on the left side there, and we've actually moved that car path considerable, and I think it's up to 30 yards up that hill to expand the fairway to the right. So again, hoping to get people to aim and actually taking that right side of that tee off where you could have people, you know, with the current layout of the fairway, aim towards the property line. We're hoping that a couple of adjustments we make there, putting people further right away from the homes. I think the idea with some of the rerouting back there, potentially getting 13 up into the hill and 14, we can look at that. I don't know if there's enough space to do everything, especially 14 being so short the way it is, but definitely we're, you know, taking a look at. On number six, the issue you do run into is that we have the park to deal with on that side with the tennis courts, you know, the existing park facilities there. I believe it was Robert remarked, one of the, our last meetings had brought up and already gave us the plan, and that was an adjustment we've made to the plan since the last time we publicized one, is that the tees are expanding to the left, and if it's a desire to, you know, try to mitigate some of those shots, you know, that are from that right side of that tee aimed right some property lines towards the center of the hole, we can potentially just reduce and completely shift those tees as far as we tend to the left. So I think we can look into that. It might not solve everything, but it would for sure at least get people aiming a little more towards the right direction. Then there's always consideration for more trees. I think that'd be something. There's a lot of trees over there, but obviously you can't stop everything. I think those were the, the main ones, and other smaller holes where I've got some notes down that we could look in, you know, whether it's tree planting or slight adjustments to tees, that's really the majority what we can do with the property lines without doing an extensive amount of rerouting. So I think those are the options we'd go to first, and then we just, you know, take direction from the committee and then get feedback as to whether there's more extensive measures that need to be done on that front.
Okay, thanks, Josh. Would you have one more, William?
Hello. Yeah, I live also on Magdalena on 10, and lived there for five years, lived all the way from Dana Point or lived for 20, and really liked living there. Don't want any trees by in front or a big net in front. We love the, the view. People can't park on the other side of the street, even though that sign where you're not supposed to park on the right-hand side going down Magdalena from the clubhouse has been moved like three times. I hope it doesn't come further down in front of our house and I might have to cut it down. And, but since I've lived there five years, almost to the day, I actually have, and this is a real count too, this isn't guessing, in excess of 450 golf balls in, in our yard. There's probably at least 50 in the backyard at the top of the house. Two broken car windshields, one of them cost $1,200. Hopefully insurance covered that one. But garage window broke out and, and nobody seems to say, hey, did I do any damage? You know, they go down the middle of the, middle of the green and then drop one, you know, nobody will even fess up to anything. My wife got hit two weeks ago, big bruise on her leg. I got hit three days ago in the front yard, just glanced off me, but it hit the neighbor's yard first, which is crass. We're, our whole front yard is flowers, and we're out there a lot, just piddling around. And yeah, I'm kind of like somebody else, I feel like I should have a helmet on. And if you go to the tee box, it's, they, it's straight into, into our, into our house if you hit. I don't know if you can adjust it. I'm not a golfer, I don't know anything about that. I just know we've had, like I said, in excess of 450 golf balls, and those are actually counted and sold for a dollar for a bucket. I'll pay for the windows that are broken. So thank you very much. I hope somebody does something. Again, don't want any trees or nets or any of that kind of stuff. Enjoy the view, that's why we bought the house. Thank you.
Back to you. Josh, if you don't have anything else, that's going to conclude the special meeting, and you can't really.
Hang on a second, I don't know that I have the direction. What I need from the committee is, is this a yes all around? Do we need additional feedback? Do you want to send it to the subcommittee to work again with the consultant? Is the committee?
On the issues we just went up?
Yeah, so if you can kind of go through your own comments, and hopefully there can be a motion to move something forward.
Well, yeah, we need to replace Mark for, to, what does that have? And then we'll, we'll get to that later.
Well, we can, why, why don't, if, if I may suggest, let's hear the comments, because it could be that you're able to get through this on the dais. If you can get general agreement, majority agreement from all of you that yes, this is the direction, you might not have to send it to the subcommittee. So let's get through comments first. If at any point during your deliberations, somebody wants to make a motion and a second, and there's a vote to add that into the plan, we, how do you recommend that? That makes it clearer for our minutes as we work back with the consultant. And then at the end of it, if the, if the majority of the committee feels like there needs to be more work with the subcommittee, then we can, we can appoint a replacement for Mark though. Okay?
And my first question is, maintenance equipment was originally one of the things we asked. Is that, has that been taken out of the master plan?
No, it's, you're just not seeing it in this. It's still, it's still a piece of the budget.
Okay.
Yes.
One of my comments was, we seem to be creating a fifth tee box on every hole, and I don't believe we had any discussion about doing that, that we need five tee boxes on every hole. I know that if the silver tees is too short for people, then maybe we take the new tee that they're suggesting, make that the silver tee, rather than add another tee box. I don't think the course is big enough to have five tee boxes on it. That's my thought. That was one of my thoughts. When we asked to look at the bunkers and the greens, we, we didn't say, committee didn't say remove bunkers and add different ones. And I'm a little concerned that we're changing the course by taking bunkers away that are there and adding bunkers, for example, on nine, putting a bunker in front of the, the green. I just don't see the, the point of these changes as not relevant to the condition of the course. And I thought that was really what we were, we were trying to do here. I don't have a problem with anything we're shortening the holes if it's related to what we're doing with the driving range and the putting green, but I don't see any point in, or why we would be changing any other hole that isn't to do with safety or a particular issue that the superintendent has on the course. Why, why are we redesigning these holes? That's one of my other questions.
Those are good.
I agree with angling the tee boxes appropriately and increasing the greens if that's what the superintendent wants to do for the use of the greens, trimming the rough down to keep it moving. I think that they're great. But we're also adding a chipping area at, at clubhouse, but we seem to be keeping the old one as well. So why are we bothering bringing a chipping area in if we're going to keep the old one? Just bring the putting area, but then, and don't take up the extra space if we're keeping the old one. And then I like that we're not increasing the driving range, the length of it, but how high will the fences be? And as somebody commented, if it's two-tiered, you need to have high fences, and that, that's a, that's a big issue. We've already been asking for the higher fences for the driving range as it is now, and putting a second tier and making it even higher. And again, I don't know, we need a second tier of the driving range there, but we do need higher fences to deal with the driving, the players playing there. That's my comments.
Yeah, thank you. In, in working with Mark and Samantha, we took in as much, as many comments as we could in looking at the overall sentiment of the original plan that was quite radical and asked to bring it more in line with the original Billy Bell style. Some of the, some of the greens, I mean, some of the bunkers were moved and changed, not specifically asked for, but Josh and the designers have had looked at modernizing a little bit, taking into consideration what is the best practices. As an example, the, I don't recall the bunker being requested on number nine, but it seems to make sense to me to have a bunker there instead of all the land short and holes all the way to the bottom. Takes a lot of time to walk down there, not a lot of fun hitting a shot out of pack up there. So that's just an example. That's all I had for right now.
Okay. I've got a couple of things that kind of came to mind. Josh, when you were looking at some of the stuff, did you guys take a look at hole 14 and trying to level down some of that right side of the hill there that's very steep in order to help? I see you moving the car path farther up there, but were we considering lowering the right side of that, that hill to help create more fairway? Again, points people more to the right and less people, you know, brings those houses on the left into play as much. I don't know if that was considered or if that's part of it. I didn't see it in the analysis. The, the other one I thought, that's sort of been on my mind and would sort of help a little bit with some of the issues that people are having is, instead of having a new, an extra hole in, in the 15B, what about turning the 16 in the 15B, what about turning the 16th hole into, you know, a par five so that we could take the 10th hole and kind of move it up and forward to have people hit more to the right a little bit and shorten 11 into a par four. So, you know, I mean, take a look at the logistics on that, keeps the par the same, might help with stopping people hitting left on 16 so much, you know, those poor homes on the left that obviously had issues, but in the past, something to consider, consider filling in some of the valley there. And then the other one I had was the green expansions that we talk about in here, is that a completely removal of the green and re-sodding it after it's expanded in size or is that a adding on to what is currently there? I know we're trying to keep some of the slopes and the contours the same, but is that a new green completely or is it a just, or adding on and re-sodding just a new area that needs to be? In my opinion, that obviously changes the timeline of things if you've got to completely tear up the green and re-sod it to make it bigger. Also, I do want to read that these greens we've had a long time and they're pretty established and we couldn't lose it. I know some courses like Torrey Heinz, for instance, when they redid their south course, they redid all their greens, put new ones in, it did not work. They really struggled for a long time after that. So I didn't know, you know, I couldn't read that in here about how the green expansion works, but whether it's just, like I said, adding on to the current greens or removing them completely, removing all the grass and then just re-sodding. So something to think about. That's it for me.
Yeah, I think in general with moving bunkers and extending the course, adding some tee boxes, I'm definitely super supportive of pointing tee boxes away from dangerous outcomes. I think that the team has changed a little bit and less skilled players are hitting the ball further and in different places. So like, I think moving bunkers around a little bit is fine. I mean, I've played many, you know, late summer afternoon rounds at this course where the greens are a little bit up, so I think small expansions of the green complexes are, like, would be fine if it helps kind of spread the load. But otherwise, I mean, it's a very, very fun golf course to play. So I mean, I think by moving a few bunkers around, expanding greens a little bit in order to make a better playing experience, you know, challenges in different places. I'm okay with that, so I, in general, I like the plan.
All right, for my part, I'm in agreement with aligning the tee boxes to protect the homes, but I don't want to get too far away from the original design of the course. It's worked so far all these years and so, yes, on the tee box alignment, but I don't want to see the holes drastically changed. That's all I have.
I guess I did have one more quick comment. I had a question if there were, if you guys had a chance to look at the proposed extension of the fourth hole and if we had any thoughts of like that, creating like a safety issue or a pace of play issue for players playing the third hole. Definitely have seen golf balls fly into that kind of condo man's land back behind the fourth hole. Because the last thing the course needs is anything that slows the round down. So I was curious if that was something that maybe we would throw out? That is one of the big distance extensions I saw. And that safety issue kind of came to mind there, pace of play issue kind of came to mind, so just food for thought.
Yeah, the notes say there's a plan to build additional trees back, plant additional trees back there, but yeah, is that enough? I don't know. Yeah, I see what you're saying. Good question. It sounds like we still have some things to adjust before this is, we would push this to council, so I'd make a motion to send this back to subcommittee to address some of the items that have been brought up and work with updating that.
I would second that. Motion's been made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There you go, Sam.
Okay, so then we would want to address the... To replace Mr. Vell.
Right.
I'll throw my name in there if anybody, if someone else really wants to.
I'd like you to do it, then.
So that's a motion by committee member Page, a second by committee member Hamilton for committee member Page to be added. Everyone's good with that?
Yeah.
Josh might end up being so happy about that.
So just because we have like a couple of minutes, I do want to make sure, since the public is here, with the subcommittee reconvening, I, we will bring this back to the golf committee likely one more time in a special meeting. It will happen relatively quickly. If you are interested in continuing to be notified, if you're a resident, we did a mailer, please contact Recreation so we can add you to an email list. We cannot continue to do mailers. We mailed out almost 600 letters. So we're going to try to shift to an email list if you're interested. So again, residents who are here and you didn't receive one of the 30,000 emails we sent out, please get your name added to the list. Debbie can take your email address or you can call the Recreation office and give us your email over the phone. We would love to get you onto that list. And then hopefully, just so the committee knows and the public knows, this comes back to call the committee one more time and then we're going to go to council for final approval just to keep the process going along. So keep an eye out. We'll post things in the press shop, we'll do more emails once we get a confirmed date.
All right, that gives us about two and a half minutes between meetings. So if you want to get up and stretch.